Okay, welcome everybody to this Kingsburg City Council and Planning Commission Workshop. Today is Thursday, May 11, 2023, about 6:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Does anybody here have public comment? Welcome to come up and speak. Anybody here from the public? So I will close up the comments. Next, Kingsburg Draft Housing Element Update Introduction by Paulie Holmes. Presentation by Lucy and Kenneth Consulting. Well, thank you for this housing element.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate your attendance tonight. This is a workshop with really information items. And this is concerning the Kingsburg Draft Housing Element update. We have our consultants for this process. It's Lucy Rollins and also Carla Martinez, who is the project planner on this effort. And they will just be running through what we have at this point for the housing element. And we'll be receiving any comments from them. I will turn it over to Lucy Rollins of Placeworks. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Paulie. Let me just get us to the first slide here. Okay, so as Paulie mentioned, my name is Lucy Rollins. I am the project manager for Kingsburg Housing Element as part of the multi-jurisdictional housing elements for the FCOG region. So tonight, our agenda is, as Paulie mentioned, just an overview of the housing element where it is right now and its draft date, going over the contents of that. This should be a recap. The first few slides will be a recap of information you heard last fall and then diving into where we're standing now. I'll go over what outreach we did as part of the process, the regional housing needs allocation, which I will call RENA. So when you see RENA, I mean the regional housing needs allocation. And then I'll dive into what our programs are and then where we stand right now on the schedule. So the purpose of tonight is to provide an overview of the draft housing element and to receive input prior to submitting to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. So we went over this last fall. The housing element is one of eight mandated sections of the general plan. It is unique in that it is reviewed and certified by the state to have a compliant housing element. The deadline for adoption for this cycle, which occurs every eight years, we're in the sixth cycle, we will be in the sixth cycle, is December 31 of this year. And that cycle will run through December 31 of 2031. So right now, we're in the fifth cycle, planning for the sixth cycle. And the purpose of the housing element is to plan for the city's fair share of the regional housing need. So the housing element content, you should have all had an opportunity to look through the housing element. It's a very large document. And for the multi-jurisdictional housing element, we tackle it in two pieces. So there's the regional housing element, which provides the introduction. It goes over regional outreach efforts that we did, has a regional housing needs assessment, so looking at demographic characteristics for jurisdictions throughout the county. The fair housing assessment, I'll go into a little bit more when it gets to local. And then just the constraints and goals and policies on a county-wide scale. So these components are the same for every jurisdiction that is participating in the multi-jurisdictional housing element. The unique part for Kingsburg is your local appendix. One H is Kingsburg. So there's a lot of similarities between the names of these sections. We just dive into the specifics for Kingsburg. So the action plan and the actual strategies, the sites inventory, as we have identified sites throughout the city. The local assessment of housing, excuse me, of fair housing is a new component for this housing element cycle. It's new under AB686. We're required to look at a number of factors that might be indicators of fair housing, opportunities for integration, things like that. And then housing constraints, so development standards, water, infrastructure, things like that. And then reviewing the effectiveness of the last housing element and pulling that all together for that action plan. So the outreach that we conducted thus far as part of the housing element update was a sort of a tag team between the regional effort and local efforts. So we had stakeholder consultations, which were a regional effort. Those were conducted with service providers, housing providers, different organizations throughout the county. We started this process as one-on-one interviews with these service providers, and we found it's really effective in getting really thorough feedback on what their experiences are, their clientele, and reaching those sort of hard-to-reach groups that may not necessarily have opportunities to come to workshops and things like that. Then we had last fall, we met with you, I think Clancy from CCRH attended last fall, and she presented an overview of the housing element before we had done the draft. We had local community workshop at a regional scale. And then we've had three regional stakeholder focus groups. So that went out to all of the stakeholders we interviewed, as well as anyone else in the county that was interested, and dove into specifics of where we were at at each step in that process. The most recent one was held on April 25th, so fairly recently. And then where we are tonight for our joint study session workshop on the draft housing element. So the RENA, this is the big one. So you should be familiar with this from last fall, is how the RENA determined. The state comes up with a projected housing need based on growth projection, sends that down to the council of government level, so Fresno Council of Government, FCOG in this case. And then FCOG works with jurisdictions to come up with a methodology and dole that out to each jurisdiction. So Kingsburg's sixth cycle, RENA, was 882 units total. When you break that down, they're broken into income categories, and these income ranges are defined at the state level based on a four-person household average. So we're looking for 248 units for very low, 161 for low, 150 for moderate income, and 323 units for above moderate. And something to keep in mind when I say we're looking for these units is that the city is not in the business of building housing. It's making sure there is land that is adequately zoned and has the appropriate development standards to support housing should a developer come forward and be interested in building, but not actually building on the city's part. So from the state, they have defined that land that is suitably zoned for lower-income housing, so that very low and low income, is anything that allows for at least 20 units an acre. And that's based on their experience working with affordable housing developers and knowing what typically pencils for those projects. And then it tiers down. For moderate income, we're looking for sort of that middle density and then lowest density for above moderate or market rate housing. So for vacant sites, you can see on this map, and it's in your practice as well, the orange sites are our vacant sites that we identified. So across all of those, there's capacity for 870 units, 417 of those being at higher densities. Those are in the highway commercial and the central commercial zones. And we'll go into Program 5 in a few minutes, and that's sort of addressing the highway commercial area. And then the second piece of this, because there wasn't quite enough capacity in the vacant sites, and there are several pipeline projects that you all have already seen, we have, I will go into in the next page, I believe, nine pipeline projects that we are using to address a portion of the RENA. And that includes two projects that are in the SOI. So those are going to be treated, sorry, the sphere of influence. Those are going to be treated a little bit differently in this housing element, just because they're not currently in the city limits. So we are just, we have another program that we added for annexation areas to just make sure that process moves forward and keeping tabs on that to address the RENA. And that's Program 6. So these are the pipeline projects, just for your information. You've all seen these before and approved them. They are all moving forward. There's nothing new as part of the housing element. We have one site for lower and the rest being above moderate income. And sites P3 and P4 are the two SOI sites that are currently moving through that process and are expected to occur fairly soon. And then the last piece of the sites inventory are the ADUs. So based on the state's methodology, we look at the past five years of ADU construction and then project out what realistically might be permitted in the next eight years. 2017 to 2020 didn't have any ADUs permitted that were recorded with the state. So we just looked at the last couple of years, assuming those trends continue, we're looking at 11 ADUs over the next eight years. If more than that built, that's great, it can be counted towards the RENA. We're just taking a fairly conservative approach on this. So bringing it all together, we have the income categories, and then we have the sixth cycle RENA, just for comparison, the vacant sites inventory, pipeline projects, ADUs. So that brings our total capacity across vacant sites to ADUs. We have a total capacity for approximately 1,300 units in the city of Kingsburg today. And this surplus column on the far right is the key one. So this surplus shows you how many units we have capacity for in excess of what the RENA is requiring. And the importance of this falls under SB 166, which requires the city to have adequate sites throughout the planning period. So should a site we've identified for lower income actually develop at moderate income, we still have an additional 85 units of capacity that we can dip into without having to rezone. Whereas if you had no surplus, you might have to rezone if a site doesn't come forward. You've got plenty of surplus, so that looks good. You're well on your way for SB 166. So the programs, the other big piece of it. So there are six goals and 36 policies. And as I mentioned at the beginning, these are regional, they're the same across every jurisdiction participating in this process. The 30 programs are unique to Kingsburg, however, each jurisdiction started with the same set, and they all tweaked them. So there are several programs that have a collaborative effort. I'll go into a couple of those as well. Of those programs in your 30, 11 of them are new and 19 are from the fifth cycle. We just modified to address any changes in state law, add commitments where the state requires, things like that. So there's a few categories here. We have our new programs. These ones are specifically to address state law. Extremely low-income households, the state requires us to determine what the projected extremely low-income household needs, make sure there are options such as single-room occupancies allowed in the city. Replacement units, so this is if units are just demolished, affordable units are demolished, there's a plan in place. Don't encode amendments, I'll go into on the next slide. And then reasonable accommodations and preliminary applications, those are required from the state. It's just a matter of adopting them on the city's front. And then improved access to resources comes from AB686 and just making sure there's adequate access to resources throughout the city for all residents. And then, so Program 16, as I mentioned, I just wanted to show you the various pieces to it. Most of these have been in place for years. There have just been updates in the legislature in the last eight years, so it's just a matter of updating the zoning code to make sure the new legislation is reflected. So density bonuses, changes to ADU laws, transitional supportive housing, all of those different unit types, just making sure they're allowed and compliant with state law. So then the second component of new programs are the ones that we added to address housing needs, identify constraints or public input. There are five of these. Program 3 is a regional program, so each jurisdiction does include this one. There's collaborative efforts there. Program 5 is the residential and highway commercial district. Currently, residential is allowed in the highway commercial district. We have just, and all of the sites that are highway commercial in your sites inventory are from the fifth cycle. We carried them over, except the difference is that we're allowed, under state law, you can't have a use permit requirement in those sites. So we're removing the use permit requirement and changing the cap to 35 feet for residential units to make sure it's compatible with other zones. Like I said, all of those sites did come from the fifth cycle and didn't develop, so the potential of them developing is probably relatively low, and there's no change, that use was already permitted. This Program 6 I mentioned was annexation areas, just keeping tabs on those as they move forward. Program 10 and Program 15 are both also regional programs. Most jurisdictions include these to address unique needs of different groups in the population, mostly lower-income households, making sure there are opportunities in place. So modified programs, there are two slides of modified programs. All of these were in your fifth cycle housing element. As I mentioned, we just adjusted them slightly to update timelines, things like that, to reflect the new cycle. We've got a few more of them here. And then that brings us to our schedule. So we started this last May. We met with you all last August. We released this draft for public review on May 2nd, and it is open for public review until June 1st. And then we will review any public comments received before submitting that to HCD, including any comments you have tonight. So that puts us at May 11. We consider public comments for 10 business days per state law and are planning to submit on June 16 to HCD, which will initiate their first 90-day review period. At the end of that, we will find out if HCD has any comments they want us to address or whether we have a conditionally compliant housing element. Throughout the state, it has required two cycles of review. No one has, I think there's one jurisdiction in the state that has only one cycle of review. So we budgeted to have a second cycle of review, meaning they have comments after the first time. We addressed them, send it back to the state. So that puts us on track to adopt, to have a letter of compliance by December and have adoption hearings with you all next January and February before submitting for the final certification. And that provides an overview of the draft housing element. If you have any questions or input, I'm happy to take them.
Can you talk a little bit about, I think there's some other jurisdictions that don't have adopted housing elements?
In Fresno County or in the state?
In the state.
In the state.
And just give some background from HCD and what that looks like and what we've seen the state do without adopted elements.
So there are sort of two pieces to that. So there are, you may have heard, there are several jurisdictions in the state that are going through their review process with HCD but are well behind schedule. And that's partially because HCD is typically doing those two rounds of review, whereas historically, they've done one round of review and been fine. So part of that is that there are many jurisdictions, especially in ABA. ... elements yet because they're going through the process. That is a good faith effort on HCD's part, that you are working through the process. There have been no issues there. There are a handful of jurisdictions in SCAG that do not have adopted housing elements or certified housing elements. They're on their third review and are generally pushing back on HCD. They don't want to do certain things. There are a couple of very extreme cases where HCD is suing them to have a compliant housing element, but generally, the point is...
What is SCAG?
Sorry, Southern California Association of Governments. And ABA is the Association of Barrier Area Governments. I use a lot of acronyms, so feel free to interrupt.
I like SCAG.
It's a good one, yeah. So the point, the purpose of having an adopted certified housing element is to maintain local control. If you do not have an adopted and certified housing element, the state has the right to come in and take over your ability to process permits, things like that. So there is extreme value in moving through this process and having an adopted certified housing element at the end of it.
What are the fuzzy on programs? Where did that come from? What are we supposed to do with these programs? Are these legislations? Is this suggestions?
So that's a great question. So programs, what that means is part of the housing element, there's an assessment of development standards, the assessment of fair housing, all of those purposes, all of those different pieces culminate in identifying whether there is housing need or addressing any challenges that might be present for developers or just goals of the city in achieving residential products that you're interested in. So the point of the programs is twofold. There are several, which I mentioned, that are to address state law. Those are required, they're very prescribed in how they are, and making sure your zoning code is in compliance with state law. The others are to address things that came up as part of public input from our stakeholder consultations, from community workshops, to address any constraints that were identified or just to remove barriers to housing generally, to make sure developers have the opportunity to build if it is appropriate and they want to.
So who drafted programs?
The programs started from the fifth cycle, so they started, the basis was the fifth cycle programs that were adopted previously. And then Placeworks, as the consultant for Kingsburg, in collaboration with staff, revised and addressed and moved them forward for the sixth cycle.
So these programs are just for Kingsburg?
Those are programs just for Kingsburg, correct. The Program 3 is a regional one, everyone has it, but for the most, like 29 out of 30 are specific. The goals and policies are, no, the goals and policies are the same across all the jurisdictions participating in the Fresno County, multi-jurisdictional, but the programs are specific to Kingsburg based on the housing element.
We understand too, that at some point, some cities are ahead of meeting some of those needs, so they don't, you know, their programs are different from other cities. We are required as planning staff to submit a report every year on how we're doing with programs. And if we haven't, if we're on track with meeting some of those goals and implementing those policies, then great, that is identified. If not, then you have to mention what you're doing to get yourself there.
And part of, sorry, more than, part of the process was we reviewed the programs from last cycle for effectiveness, if there were any challenges of implementing them, and tried to address that to make them more effective this cycle.
Is the state requiring us to sign these programs or is this just an internal?
So as Paulie mentioned, there's the annual progress report, is that you have to report, the staff has to report to the state every year on the implementation progress of programs. Currently, there have been, there's been no enforcement of not meeting them, however, we don't know if that's going to change moving forward. So we've tried to make them as achievable as possible.
Just to kind of bring you up to speed on some of, timing on some of these projects. For instance, our most recently, the low-income housing development, started out, healthy development, and I can't remember how many years ago that was, 10 or 12 years, 10 years at least. It takes a very long time for us to go ahead and bring these things to fruition. I think in terms of the prices of land, and the fact that it takes so much investment and funding with the restraints, the structural, the required improvements in the way of solar, all of those other mandates that have been handed down to our friends in Sacramento. It seems like it's very, very difficult, other than housing authority-type projects, to go ahead and meet the very low-income status.
So the city's responsibility is to have land that is appropriately zoned for it, should development occur. And so that's the key phrase there, is that the challenges you mentioned for development, if the circumstances aren't right, the affordable housing developers don't have funding, whatever it may be, the city has provided land, you have met your statutory requirement of making sure that's available, and then it's on the development side for whether or not it actually happens. Yeah.
So in your opinion, are we up to speed on the land available for development?
Yes, so the sites inventory between the vacant sites, the pipeline projects, and then the 11 ADUs, you have enough capacity in place to support development to meet your RENA, should the development occur. And did you have a question over there?
Well, no, it's about the programs. As you noted in your presentation, the pipeline projects are all above moderate.
Yes.
So then we're looking at...
Except for one.
Except for one.
Except for one. What you're talking about is making sure that we have adequate zoning to address...
Correct.
... the other economic provision, economic standards.
Right. Exactly. And so with current zoning, there is sufficient capacity for 417 lower-income, 408 moderate, 45 above moderate, based on those densities that I mentioned at the beginning that typically correspond with the price of housing. So that would be a total of 870, which makes up the difference between what the pipeline projects will provide and what is needed.
Some question, going back to programs.
Yeah.
You said Program 3 is required?
Programs 3, so that's the homelessness program. So the state currently is pretty committed to addressing homeless needs, so making sure there are services in place. And given the capacity of most jurisdictions in Fresno County and the actual size of the homeless population in most jurisdictions in Fresno County, we felt that that was best as a regional collaborative program, to making sure there was services available in Fresno County where it's needed and keeping tabs on the homeless. There's a point in time count, rough about every two years. So if there's a homeless population that arises in Kingsburg or Huron or wherever, making sure the resources are available through that collaborative effort countywide. So that, the actual language of the program was developed by us, but the state does require you to address homeless needs, homelessness needs.
So we're supposed to make homeless at all?
No.
Do they stay homeless?
No, no. It's service providing, so working with organizations that might be food banks or might provide emergency shelters, things like that. Not having housing available necessarily, but making sure there are services available to address the needs that those that are experiencing or at risk of homelessness.
And that's in the county?
In the county.
Right here in...
Correct. Yeah. The only requirement on the city is making sure there's a zone that allows emergency shelters, and we're good. We, I think...
We've had that in the fifth cycle.
Yeah, we had that in the fifth cycle, so...
So this year we're over.
It's just to make sure that should someone want to build an emergency shelter, they can, that's already, that's already the case.
And obviously, in Fresno County, have that.
Yes.
Close to the last housing. You have to, you need to allow for that, should somebody want to build that. But the reality is, they'll often be excited where they're certain, which makes that. A lot of people don't have transportation, and they have certain medical needs, and they have, you know, need to check in with other social services. So the housing opportunities for that population tend to be...
Another question, Paulie. On the pipeline project, the P5, is that that apartment complex that we approved, is that have to be market rated?
Yeah, that wasn't included in that pipeline project because, you know, it's already come forward. Well, it's down there, but it's above moderate.
But it's P5 or not? Is that maybe different?
Lot of property we did that's easy for us, but they actually don't, she actually doesn't, that family doesn't own it anymore, but that's the property.
And that's a good location for, 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 I have seen it, for a housing...
...........................